Right here. As we get these kids, these last two settled, we're gonna go ahead and start our agenda, our meeting, so that we can then have our kids work with us on it. So, I'm gonna open the meeting, it's five o'clock, and I'm gonna call it to order, so Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Donna Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lussen.
Here.
Here. Alright, thank you Laurlee. The next item real quickly is the approval of our agenda, so, um, oh pledge of allegiance, let's do that. Trying to hurry through it, and I can't do that. So Nancy, when everybody's up and ready.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Nancy. Nice, proud to do the pledge tonight. Alright, approval of the agenda. So I will ask first of all if there are any changes or additions to the agenda, as per it.
I'd like to move that, um, I don't know if I can do that, but move that the UNA budget part of the contracts group on fifty just be moved to discussion.
Everything is in discussion.
We don't vote on anything?
Yeah. We aren't voting on anything. Everything is in discussion.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so I need a motion to approve the, um, agenda.
So move.
Thank you.
Send it.
Thank you. So it's Stu and, um, Amy. Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Donna Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lussen.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Alright. Motion is approved, so we will go ahead now and like turn our time over to Carrie Martin's staff.
Awesome, thank you so much, Madam President, Dr. Heller, members of the board. I'm so happy that you can be here tonight with us to see the amazing things happening at Carrie Martin. I've got some pretty special people I wanna introduce. This is our student lighthouse, student lighthouse members, can you give them a wave?
Hi.
Hello.
Um, what is student lighthouse? Go ahead.
Student lighthouse is, um, like, is a light showing the direction of our school, like a lighthouse.
Awesome. So our student lighthouse members are here to support, we also have some members from our, um, tour team, our tour guides, so if you wanna give a wave, tour guides. Alright. And actually, tour guides, that is our presentation tonight, we are gonna go and walk the school, so. Um, tour guides, if you wanna come stand over here, introduce yourself and get them started.
Um, my name is Otto, I will be a tour guide for today.
Hi, my name is Keen, um, I'm a student lighthouse and I'll help you with the tour today.
Hi, my name is Toby, and I'm on the tour team.
Hi, my name is Dante, and I'm on the tour team.
Can you tell us what grade you're in?
I'm in fifth grade.
I'm in fourth grade.
I'm in fourth.
And I'm in fifth grade.
Uh, so if you'd like to go on the tour with us, will you, please follow us.
One big group or is it gonna be? One big group?
Okay.
We will do that. Hopefully they'll bring us back. I think they'll have you sit, the last thing is a tour of materials. Yeah. We'll have to partner up and look at his elbow. Elbow buddy. No, uh, just you here. You guys just.
So does each student have a notebook?
Yes. So, yes, each student does have a notebook, and then you can look through that and see what they, um, been working on and trying to fill out and do. Um, so we, these.
So do they build on this, so like this looks like it's a kindergarten?
Yes, so I think that would.
Or then will they add to this notebook?
Yes.
And separate it or whatever.
So, yeah, they have the same notebook, but some things are taken out, so as you can see, there's little tabs, um, on each of them, so that's every category that they fill in, um, but then they take that out every year for new year to work on. Um, and that these help us with, so we have teacher, parent-teacher conferences, um, guys wanna tell about that? Um, parent-teacher conferences is pretty much like show, your parents will come to the school, and then you will show them your leadership notebooks and what's all done, and maybe what you need help on.
What's all student-led.
And it's all student-led, well, most of it, at least, um, so this kind of helps them, um, help, helps them be like, okay, here, mom, dad, this is what's going on, this is what we're doing in class. Um, so I think that's.
Do you have any questions for either tour guides or student lighthouses?
I have a question, but it may be for you. I remember when we were here a couple or three years ago, there were seven habits, and now there are eight. So, can you tell us why the eighth one was added and when that was added and so on?
Yes. So Stephen Covey, it's modeled after Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People.
Yes.
And then Leader in Me takes the approach for the seven, it was Seven Habits of Happy Children, and then Finding Your Voice was added. Looking somewhere in the room, I think 2018, around there. Um, some knew that some of our documents don't have it included, so we have to draw it on.
Okay.
Some real pieces, but it was added later on to give some more im- uh, implementation components to schools, finding your voice as a leader.
Yeah.
Any other questions, you guys?
Do you have a question?
I started last week.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For bringing them.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure to thank you grownups for bringing you.
Yes, we do appreciate parents that bring them over, it's great. Thank you so much. It's fun.
Alright.
Lisa.
Yes.
Alright. Thank you, you guys. Alright, we ready to go? Alright. We, um, are going to go ahead and move into our discussion items for the upcoming board meetings, and we'll start with, um, the first one, which is the First Reading Policy JFBA Choice Enrollment Program, and these are the tweaks and the changes, I think, is that right?
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Heller, members of the board. Sarah Rasmussen, Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services. And, um, tonight I have two team members with us that are going to really explain the changes that are before you. Um, we came before the board last year with changes to the, um, open and choice policies, and as we always want to do, we want to go back and do revisions, but we find that there are things that need to be tightened up or changed because of the ease for our community, and so tonight, that's what you are going to hear about, the revisions and, um, and we'll be able to answer any questions. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Colin and Carrie, who will introduce themselves.
Thanks, Sarah. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Heller, Carrie Barton, Director of Assessment and Evaluation.
Uh, my name's Colin Day, coordinator for access, we'll be the compliance, five oh four services and school health services, thank you.
So, uh, in front of you, we have the policies, as Sarah alluded to, that we brought to you last year that were completely revised. The process was completely different last year, and so we really wanted to take the opportunity and get feedback from the building level staff on how did things go, how did things go from moving many of the processes up to district office? And so what we realized was we were able to tighten and shorten our timelines on, on different things, and so a lot of what you see in here is changing the dates of when we're opening and closing items, and also shortening, um, our choice window, so just to give a little bit of a recap, choice enrollment is for our students that are in district currently, and open enrollment is for students that live out of district currently, that apply to come here. Last year, we had two choice enrollment windows for our students in district, we decided to bring that to one window and extend it longer. So we're gonna open it still the same time, November first, school day in November, and instead of closing it right before the holiday break, we're gonna leave it open through January thirty first this year, and just give it that window of time, we know the holidays are really busy for people, and so that's what we found with, uh, two windows last year, is it's really giving the opportunity in that spring semester for people to make those decisions as they're trying to decide which school they wanna go to next year.
Do, once they open enrolled, will, will they not hear anything until the end of February, or whenever that close time was? So nobody's gonna get notified along the way?
Yep, so we changed some of that as well, and so choice will all be notified at the same time than when it closes, so that first week of February, um, we have a, it's systematic, um, for the choice side. What, um, some of the feedback was, was on the open enrollment, because we closed it so much later last year, they didn't find out until May, whereas this year, they're gonna find out in March, which is really helpful for, um, when our employment, um, comes out and how many students they have in their buildings, and they're trying to determine. Principals will have the opportunity to know how many teachers they need and how many sections of things that they need. Um, so we're, we bumped that window up by two months, which will hopefully really help that process. So last year, they didn't find out until May fifth, um, our open enrollment students, this year, they're gonna find out in March before we head to spring break. So that was one of the big pieces, was that timeline, and then?
Uh, yeah, sorry, my notes over here. Um, we also have made it so that for students that miss that first window, because we've always wanted to have a second opportunity for those kids to still get into schools that have seats available, um, that they are able to apply through open enrollment, so which runs until the beginning of the school year. We did that both for administrative reasons, we have seats that are open, um, and holding those seats back, that just causes some hardship for regular principals and determining what classes are off there, they get filled last minute, um, and as well as just because the seats are there, let the kids in, right? Um, so in the spirit, we, we made that change. Um, we're gonna add a hardship placement option, we found that we had, we tried to be really clear in all of our exceptions, and then we thought we could use one more. Uh, and that is for students that have unforeseeable circumstances, right? We, we were already kind of doing that, um, but we wanted to make sure there was appropriate involvement policy. Um, and then of course, we revised some of the academic programs that were listed there previously, as we did more inventory, we found that those programs had changed based on how they were described, some of those programs were even whole school programs, so there wasn't a reason to offer a priority enrollment to that school, because if you go to the school and they've seen you in the program, so.
We didn't wanna be super specific with, we gave some examples of some of the hardships we saw, but just to give you a number, I probably approved over two hundred enrollments of some sort of hardship after windows had closed for making sure students had the opportunity to attend where they needed to, and so, um, Colin did a really great job of putting some of them in there, but you can't encapsulate all of them, it's just when each of those stories comes in, you just kinda hear them out and see what's needed and what's best for that student in that particular time, and whatever the family circumstance might be. Any questions?
Any questions on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's a simple one, um, I'm just wondering if we should have the specificities of the dates. Um, I know that we ultimately need to make that known to everyone, but having it in policy means that next year, if we need to shift it, we're locked in. And so I think if we generalize to say we have one window, you know, and our intention is to have it be across both first and second semester, um, that would then allow us to have the dates be more fluid in the future without having to come back for policy. Um, otherwise, I think, you know, the fact that it's been vetted by practice is really great, and you've thought through the big things that came up, and I think it's simpler in general, which is always good.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Any other questions on this part of it?
I have a couple of questions and comments. Um, so, in the policy, the JFBA, at, on page six, where it's talking about it, it says return to home, but then everywhere else you call it return to boundary, so that one needs to be boundary.
Just missed one, you?
Yeah.
We saw there were people confused at homeschool versus return to home, so we had to switch the language.
Right, no, no, I don't agree with that, yeah, no, I get that.
Thank you for the catch.
Um, and then I have a question on the regulation, there's just sort of, there was, there was a section in there about remedy that was totally deleted, and so I'm curious why that was.
So we're not required to offer an appeals process, we desperate in last year, 'cause we, we were making huge changes to how we've done things historically. Nobody used it, there was no need to use it, everyone tried, pretty much got into where they wanted to go. We are not, had capacity in almost any universes, if they might be tuned, they're close. Um, so, nobody had utilized it, and it does have some downstream impacts on rights on other processes, 'cause many, like, federal rights laws will say you must offer equivalent processes, if you offer for appeal in this law, if you offer them anywhere. So, for clarity's sake, we just removed it.
Okay. And then the other sort of similar question I had was about, there was about like the transportation thing, and about, there was about transportation, the transportation by consent denial notice, that section was also.
Yep. Also not required by statute, and also we found that those issues around transportation were being handled through hardship anyway. Those kids aren't able to get transport, so we, they were, parents were more likely to ask to go to their homeschool, or the closest school to them, than they were to try and seek attempt, uh, seek transportation to their, to the school they were currently enrolled in.
Okay. So in general, kids who are gonna choice enroll are not provided?
They are not transportation, right?
That's correct.
And that is stated in the application, and we walk the, all the parents through that ahead of time.
Okay.
Did you have anything you wanted to say about the regulation? At all?
Anything specific on the regulation?
On the regulation one?
The regulations are very much so just dates specific.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Do any of the rest of us have questions on the regulations?
I have sent in a question.
Yes.
About the language, uh, on page twenty, since I wondered what your reaction was to my reaction to the language.
It was a great question, and we appreciate your reaction. No, uh, we are gonna redact the sentence, it really isn't needed, and so to just alleviate the confusion, we're gonna take it out. Um, in that hardship, we explained basically as we said in there, anything that comes up, we wanna make sure students feel comfortable and have the access that they need to, whatever the building would be. Now again, as Colin said, if, if we get to be, hopefully in the next few years, we're to the point where we're, we're building full, right? And, and we're talking about having capacity in all of these buildings, and then we may need to have this conversation again around, hey, we're at building capacity, we don't, you know, these hardships we may need to talk through, but until we hit that point of being at capacity in our district, it really isn't an issue, and we really do wanna welcome as many kids into our district as we possibly can. So we'll just redact that sentence.
Are we also talking about JFBB now, or are we talking about that later?
Yeah.
Yeah, unless there's.
Well, do you wanna keep them supr-, do you wanna keep them separate, is there anything?
We kinda did all of it at once for you, so go for it.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. Alright. And I sent you this question also, um, I wondered if there was a need to define resident and non-resident, and it would probably be at the beginning of the document to make sure that people understood what we were talking about.
We certainly can, those things are defined in state law, which is why we make the rest of non-resident terminology, um, but we continually have a sense, so that's what we need.
And, I'm not necessarily pushing for it, if you believe it's already covered somewhere else, then I'm, I'm fine to, to accept that. You know that, I didn't know that, and I just wanted to make sure that someone who's looking at the policy would be clear as to what those terms actually meant.
Districts or resident versus not resident, and, and I think your wording, I don't know if we'll add district in front of every single time we mention it, but maybe just a one sentence at the beginning.
Yeah, I wondered if maybe part of a preamble at the beginning or something like that, just, just to make sure that there wouldn't be confusion, so we're down the line.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Easy to have that in.
Alright.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a couple of other questions about the JFBB.
Okay. So you're JFBB, okay.
Yeah. One of which also sort of, I think because of making it the combination of the resident and the non-resident, there's a couple of things that are a little bit confusing.
Okay.
Um, one of which, I can't, I should've written down exactly what line it was on, but I said non-resident students may apply for enrollment into a desired school, and then it says once a non-resident student has submitted their application to the open enrollment program, it says the resident student can have an open enrollment applicant.
Or it should say non-resident.
It should say non-resident, but I'm sorry, I don't know what line that's in. I can try to find it. Um, and then the other question, sort of similar to that, I think, because of combining the two under, this is also in that, in the regulation, where it says priority two or three or four denial or waitlist expiration. Should an open enrollment applicant deny all open enrollment offers, or still be on the waiting list when the waitlist expires, the student shall not be enrolled in any TSD school? If it's a resident student who's using the open enrollment as choice enrollment, that would essentially mean that they get kicked out of the district.
Yeah, it should, there should be an addendum that says, or if they're a resident student, they'll be enrolled in our homeschool.
Okay, so yeah, that.
Attendant's area school, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes it, yeah.
Yep, that, that's great.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah.
We tried to put all, both of them together to make sure.
I think for the most part, it worked out good, but there were just those couple.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
So actually, that was the last question I had then, which is, you told us what the difference is between the two, but the average parent person who's gonna go look at this is not necessarily how you've given this presentation. So I just wanna make sure that it's easy for them to find the right one, and that they don't poke around and read the wrong one and then do the wrong process. So if we can just make sure that there's a relatively easy way for people to do it, especially during windows. Like, it doesn't have to be all the time, but the windows, obviously, we wanna make sure they're grabbing the right ones, so that they do the things we need them to do.
We, we push that on the website, and we have it clear, and we also have it, um, the application now in three languages, and then they have the, um, toggle at the bottom where they can pick additional if needed, so we're, we're constantly trying to work through those as well. And we have the capability of, if for some reason they go into open and they should be in choice, we can just transfer it on the backside, so they don't have to do it all over again.
Perfect.
That's great.
Thank you. So does anybody have any questions on anything, including the JFBB, um, regulation? So then we've covered them all, right? So everybody's okay with what we have slipped? Okay.
Yes, so we'll need a vote on this in two weeks.
In two weeks.
And then, um, it will open then November third.
Perfect. Alright.
Yes.
I was just saying, isn't it just one week?
Yeah.
And we need.
Oh, it's next week.
It's one week already.
Yeah.
As long as the fifteenth. It's already the sixth.
Yes.
Crazy.
Yes, it's one week.
Quick, quick.
Yep.
So quick turnaround, and it's still gonna open November third. They're still applying then.
Yes.
And Carrie, you will update the redlined version to include all the things that we've talked about tonight.
It'll be ready for you for the.
Alright, thank you. Perfect.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Next item is four point five, which is the First Reading Policy CCA, Constance School District Organizational Chart.
Tiffany.
Hi, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Heller, Tiffany Rogers, Chief Human Resources Officer. And bringing before you today the policy change to policy CCA, and as you can see, the redlined version up here, originally we had, um, names listed, which made the policy very difficult to, um, maintain and upkeep when staff were changing or staff moved to different roles in the organization. Um, in looking at what other school districts, they have moved to a title only, and so that's what we're proposing, is going to a title only, um, piece, and make that much easier, then we're not coming to every time there's a change, only if there's a change in the actual title of the position.
Any questions on that?
I have just one, a simple one. I, I like going to the version without names, but I was just wondering, like, maybe like, was a header page before departments, if there can still just be a copy of it saying, like, this is currently who, who are in these positions, just so some people can look up and see like, oh, this is who I'm trying to find.
Ian, my understanding is in the specific departments, but I'll go back and research a little more, the specific departments usually have names and titles listed in there when they click on that specific department.
I think if you're essentially recommending somewhere on the website, a place where people can see it all in one place.
I just, who are the current people?
Is that, are you saying every employee, or just the ones here?
Just, just this, for this chart.
Okay.
I mean, don't, we don't need to update the policy every time it changes, but just on the website, when people can just look and go, oh, that's who's running special.
I think that's due.
In one loc-, in one location, not by department, 'cause right now it's by department.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, it totally makes sense. Okay, great.
Perfect.
Thank you, we'll see you on the fifteenth. Yeah.
Which is in a week, I know it's going up fast.
Decided that, yes.
Alright. Okay, um, now we have the, uh, four point six, the ADA Assessment and Enroll Sale, uh, Processes Update, so hi, thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me, Madam President, Board Education, Dr. Heller, Dr. Tony, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. So, I'll run through the presentation real quick, and then I'll submit any questions. So as we started this several months ago, um, we took on a process to find, um, an assessment, a self-assessment transition, a self-assessment and transition plan requirement that met, um, Title II underneath the ADA, so that's, um, a lot of work put into one sentence, um, but what we found is really to do it right, that's what we needed to find, is a partner that could do that, so that's what you'll see here tonight. Um, so what will it do? It'll audit all of our schools built before two thousand ten, even though our schools before two thousand ten were built to ADA code, they're not up to the current two thousand ten requirements. And although two, two thousand ten's fifteen years ago, that is the most current requirement that's out there, so that's what's adopted as of right now. Actually adopted in two thousand twelve. Um, so the assessment will go through, um, all those standards for all those schools. So you saw, if you saw the quote, that all those schools are listed, um, and also goes through what it'll look like. So to get to that point, uh, the recommended consultant, we engaged, uh, World Architects, who have helped us before, you know, they're the designers that really design the day-to-day ADA requirements. Uh, what we found real quick is there's very few firms that actually do that level of assessment. Even the state of Colorado, there's very few districts that have gone through this, so we found two firms, um, and you'll see the recommendation is to go with the JQP. When you look at their proposal, most of their work is around school district work, so it's a lot, anyway, there's about four or five different states they've worked in, and their focus is primary K-12. So there was another firm that we, um, interviewed that was, um, did a lot of the same work, but it was a lot of municipality work, so it was more city work rather than K-12. So after some extensive interviews and process, um, we went through with, uh, World as the main contract holder, and they will subcontract JQP. Um, because as they go through the process, World will actually help them do measurements, they actually are the certified designers, so they're the ones that actually are licensed to submit for permits in the state, so they really have to be the lead, uh, JQP's this up. The estimated cost is two hundred thirty-one thousand, so that's the other piece of this item tonight, is when we first estimated this, it came in at a hundred and twenty thousand. So going to this level of assessment, um, there's a, it's two hundred thirty-one thousand is the final, um, contract price for that, so. The timeline you'll see will start here, uh, soon as the board approves, and they will go through, really the summer time. If we were pushed to go a little faster, the challenge is to do it right, you gotta get like into every nook and cradle of the building, so we. So we were looking to even late starts, weekends, nights, um. Logistically, it was a little tough to do this with square footage, um, in those couple hour blocks here and there, so. Uh, that is, the timeframe is really January, now until July twenty-sixth. So in saying that, the, uh, next slide is just the update of the Monroe sale proceeds, so this is also, because this was tied into the bigger order approval on June eighteenth. Uh, this updates the projects where we're at, so the good news is we've saved money, um, you'll see in a few different positions. So like the tennis courts, the mercury flooring, um, egress lighting. We actually did some of the work by general fund before this was approved, so. Long story short, we've, um, included the, uh, two hundred thirty-one thousand and increased the ADA budget between the third-party accessibility and the ADA work at district-wide. So that entire, those two items for ADA, uh, have gone out. And you also see that we noted the actual proceeds, because last time when we were going through this, there was a timing of the board meeting compared to actual sales, so this is the actual proceeds, um, that were deposited into bank. So in saying that, there's, uh, obviously a lot of, uh, background information to this and work that's got into this, but the goal here is to get someone that considers that, um, title to self-assessment evaluation. And our recommendation is to go with JQP and WOLD, and then for this dollar amount.
Have those two companies worked together before on something like this or not?
They have outside of Colorado, I guess, yeah.
This one's curious. Are there any other questions about this?
Are you doing a? Um, on the ADA, um, assessment, I just had a couple of questions. Is Berthardt and Ivy excluded? Because we're expecting the bond to pass, hopefully it will. But if it doesn't pass, will they get added to the list?
They will, yeah. Yeah.
And what does that do, will that change the cost?
It will update the cost, yes.
By?
So I think it was five thousand each school, so it's
Oh.
For elementarys, it's a minor cost, yeah.
Okay.
Cause they're pretty small.
Okay. And then, um, once this whole assessment report is done, will that report be made available on the website so that people, people in the district who are paying for it can see what it came back and said?
Yeah, I mean, I'd recommend we can talk about that after it's done, but I know we've talked about like making it part of, um, CSAC or another committee to say, here's our actual, cause it's a, um, it's not something you're just gonna light the foot through, I mean, it's a fifteen thousand item. You know, multiple page, hundreds of page documents, that there should be a process we go through, whether it's that committee or another one, to say, okay, here's what it is, here's the dollars we have. Um, it'll give us a priority of, here's your flashing reds. Though, you know, as we know, there's never enough money, so then we can go through more of a community process, say, okay, here's our top ten. We have this, how do we, how do we now, but maybe attack the top four of that, so. Yeah, once this is done, I recommend, and we can talk more about it, that, uh, this goes through more of a committee process, like an MPC or, you know, something like that, so it's not, um, staff just picking and choosing, cause it, it'll all be out there in public, so.
Okay.
I imagine at some point, once this is done, we'll do some type of a presentation to the board about the the findings and all of that, where, and where this massive document will probably be an item for the board, I mean, it'll, it will be, looking at some of the other districts that have done this work, it becomes a very massive document, um, literally line by line, building by building of every little thing that needs to be touched, so.
Mm-hmm. And, and then I just had a couple of questions on the spreadsheet, Allison Valley. Okay. Um, so I'm guessing when you said some had already happened on the Thompson Valley Underground Gas Line for ninety, was that the JD Enterprises for eighty-three thousand that we had approved back in June? On the contracts, um, over fifty?
Yeah, I don't remember the actual contract, but that's what that is.
But is that, is that why, that's why that went over?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Um, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure. And then, on the bidirectional, what are they, bidirectional amplifiers? Uh, cause those are needed for security. I guess, from my perspective, again, going back to, it's a small amount of money. I would rather see, um, the tennis courts and/or the pool put, moved out, because this is related to security of the schools, so that everything works the way it's supposed to, which is important for security, so that that can go ahead and be pushed through as part of this versus waiting for capital, um, funding or for the bond to come through.
Yeah, we look at, the, the pool is not for the pool, it's the HVAC, because the structure's, um, actually deteriorating, so that's yeah, that's something that's pretty, uh, significant that we need to address.
Oh, I'm just going off, you said, you said it was pool HVAC, so.
Yeah, that's what, I just gotta note that that's what it is, because it's a pretty significant issue up there, it's literally things like rusting, falling off, so. Um, but we do, we have, uh, three options, so. We have some dollars here, we actually submitted a grant a year ago. The website is currently down, cause it's from our federal government. Um, and we have cap and or bond, so it is a priority. Um, we are working through different ways. The other thing we do is see if there are savings in other places to push some of these forward.
Okay, I just, yeah. So I understand now on the pool, but on the tennis, because that's athletics, again, it's not that athletics isn't important, but when you only have less than five million to work with, I think the security with these bidirectional apps should be a priority.
Correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't that a title nine thing, wasn't that the thing with the tennis courts?
Tennis courts. Well, it, um, if, if it doesn't work with the property, it could be, um, we're okay where we're at. So, right now, I mean, they're, well, you see pictures, there's just gaps in it, and they're shut down, and it's it's just not, it's a, it's a liability within itself, yeah.
What, what was this, so it looks like there has been some amount for the, for the bidirectional, the forty-one thousand?
Forty-one.
What, what is that cover?
So that's gonna cover a piece of one of them.
Okay.
So depending on another funding source, that's just enough to cover. Cause I think the total, if I recall, about TVHS was, let's say sixty-five to seventy thousand. So that'll cover a piece of it, so then cap or another funding source can fill it back in.
No, it'll also, like, I know for sure TVHS, maybe also Berthardt High, we also have bidirectional listed as potential bond projects if the bond were to pass. So then we wouldn't have to spend it out of the Monroe proceeds if the bond were to pass, so those dollars could be used in other ways, could have, yeah. If the bond were not to pass, then we would use some of these funds, but, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
That makes sense.
Sorry, anybody else have questions for Todd on this?
Mostly just I wanna come back to the where we should talk about it, or where this should live. And I think in an ongoing committee that's already doing the work and very familiar with, like, looking at this stuff is gonna be the best place, right? Cause we don't have to bring it up to speed, we're just saying this is the new, like, the new assessment that was done that was looking at it this way, so. You know, MPC is in that level of detail all the time, it makes sense that they have that background and knowledge. Um, and then I think there's, there is a CAC review that's necessary as well, but not to the project level of, that MPC goes into. And so I just kinda wanna echo what you said and, and validate that, I think that, um, we don't need to create another committee, we need to make sure that we're and because ominously creates challenges, like what we just described with this, we're cheap because things are tracked in multiple places, and so that's why it's helpful to put it in where it belongs, you know, so thank you.
Okay.
I am sorry, I have one more question.
Hmm?
So, with, like, the, whatever it is, I can't remember JP, whatever, from Minnesota, with, um, like, sort of supervising the, the work, but the WOLD people doing it. Like, they said, like here I saw, like in their proposal, they say because the survey is based on knowledge, not a checklist, the team is able to gain a big picture understanding of accessibility. But then they say one of their jobs is gonna be creating a checklist for WOLD to follow. So I would just wanna, like, are we confident that WOLD will have the knowledge and the support from them that they'll need to do a, a really good job?
Yes, um, two reasons, one is, they actually will issue the report that certifies it was done by the standards, so they have to make sure that WOLD actually does it. WOLD in essence is the, uh, tape measure holder, so we'd have to pay them to be out here. You know, as they say, in the restroom, look at these ten things, here's the, here's the parameters. You know, here's your picture, what's your, maybe, and they go certify or they go verify what's there.
Okay.
So in the end, they'll actually issue the, um, report. And then WOLD will be, um, you know, the contract behind that to make sure that what they do in JQP together is what we're looking for.
Okay.
And that's why, um, you know, we asked within the, the, uh, quote to include examples.
Right.
Cause that's what, that's what we, we're requiring this, so when it says, this bathroom, here's how it exactly has to look. And it's not by code, by this number, and here's a picture, and here's, so it'll get to that level.
Okay. And this is probably a stupid question, but just to make certain, because ADA is a federal law, it doesn't matter that the, this company, most of their experience is in a different state, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Good question.
I'm sorry, I realized I had one more, it should be quick. Um, I know we're, they're doing this for all of the schools. But the ADA act, it all, it applies to all of our property, like, all, any building we own. Um, the admin, you know, all of those. So what is the plan, maybe there's not, for getting those buildings assessed, especially like the admin building where uh, we do have lots of non-district employees and people coming in and out. When will we, um, tackle that part of it at the beginning, those assess, because those leave us, to me, um, open to potential problems if there are compliance issues, because it doesn't matter if it's a school building or not, we can still get sued.
Correct, and that was not going in, you'll notice on the slide, it says specific to school buildings.
Mm-hmm.
In this phase, I'll call it, we had, I'm just focused on that first. There will have to be, you know, another phase at some point to do, we have, you know, SSC building, R building, transportation, you know, some other buildings that, um, when they were, if they were built before, based two thousand twelve, we'll have to go through and check them. But right now, this is a pretty significant lift, so we said, let's get the schools and this plan completes. Then as we get this complete, this is really the major financial lift too, you know, if we need to do this building for, you know, three, four thousand, after five, we can kind of manage that, you know, on Norba, got the next phase, but um, going into it, we looked at the schools as the, the first phase priority.
So maybe a couple of years before we?
I would say even after we get this, you know, make sure we absorb this and get, you know, this done, complete. And then just continue, but I mean, it's not, it's not that much more, I mean, it's not, there's more buildings, but it's not a significant amount, cause a lot of the buildings too were built after two thousand twelve, you know, so they were all at these standards, so the High Plains, River View, um, even Peak View, they had to go through the two thousand twelve standards.
Yeah, I'm not worried about those.
Yeah, but the other, uh, auxiliary facilities, yes, we'll, we'll get those, you know.
Okay. We're gonna move on to, um, four point seven is the approval of pre-condemnation agreement.
Yeah, this is a bunch of.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I've read about this one a lot, because they think because I taught out there at that school, I should have
Yeah, I think you need, um, yeah, you need a lot of things to understand this bigger picture, so here's what I'll try to do.
Yeah, that's exactly.
If we go to the picture, um, this is a very complex, um, so as you saw the documentation, the different court, court documentations and backcourt, the rulings, different rulings. What it comes down to is that the ninety-six acres, ninety-four acres we sold, when you sell your property, you don't actually sell the grantor rights, grantee rights of a conservation easement. So even though the land is no longer ours, the conservation easement stays as us. It, it doesn't transfer because it's permanent, it doesn't, it's, it's, it's there. Unless there's a condemnation, uh, from a municipality. So in essence, that yellow you see there is the conservation easement that's in conflict, is just that past red area. So what the, what the town did is they're gonna build through sixty, I think that's sixty-seventh avenue, sixty-ninth, whatever it is. They went and put a right-of-way, a city right-of-way on top of the conservation easement, which legally you can't do that without condemning, uh, from us that easement, so they went through the court process to Lurva County for the last year since we sold this. And that's what all that documentation is. So they've legally condemned it from us, um, through a legal court process, from us, um, taking that out of the conservation easement and giving it to the city for their street right-of-way. So the yellows, the larger conservation easement, the red is the city right-of-way that overlaps the conservation easement. So that yellow that's underneath the red will eventually just be city property in a road, right, um, in a road easement, so the road's gonna go through there. So to do that, that's the process that's in all the documents that you saw, it's, um, I wouldn't know how to sit here and explain it for the next hour, but it's all there. It really goes through the court process, but how they have to take that from us, so they condemn that easement from us. So what the board's being asked is just to recognize that the city has condemned that easement section from TSD. So they legally already taken it, the courts have already approved it, the judges, they've gone through their process. Everything's down, you know, you saw the court proceedings, and now they're saying, okay, we understand you've taken the section, the conservation easement from us. And there is a fee that we get sixteen thousand five hundred for giving them that easement. So. Let me know if there's any questions, it's, uh, there's a lot to it, um, a lot of pieces, but that's what it is.
So Todd, we make sixteen thousand five hundred dollars through this deal, and we don't pay anything?
We don't pay anything, we get sixteen thousand five hundred.
From the city?
Uh, the developer pays the city and the city pays us. The challenging thing is, by state statute, when you take money out of a condemnation from a conservation easement, you have to apply that money back to the conservation easement.
Doesn't exist anymore?
Well, part of it still exists, so when's the, when, when the land is fully developed, you know, this will probably be some pond or something, so we would have to put that sixteen thousand dollars back to whatever improvements might help that easement. So we can't take that actually dollars.
So we don't actually.
It's ours, but it's, it's, it's restricted, so we can't.
So would it be held in the pilot fund?
Probably, we haven't talked about what actually held, but yeah, it'll be held somewhere.
You can't put it in the capital improvements, cause you'll, we'll spend it.
No, no, yeah. Yeah, that's true. We will, yeah. Yeah, so we'll have to put that in a restricted funds, cause we won't be able to just.
So basically, we're holding that money up here each time.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Alright.
Why if, why if we were said, were to say no?
Yeah.
Like, when it's, I mean.
They'll condemn it, and we'd have to go, the courts already approved it, so we really have not much of a leg to stand on at this point.
Cause we sold the property.
We sold the property, we're just recognizing, okay, we understand you've already taken this from us. It's the same process we went, when we built River View, we gotta condemn the neighbor's property.
Yeah.
So as a government entity, we can condemn property, we took the property, we delivered the papers to the neighbor, and said, we took your property. And, yeah, if you don't, I don't know what happened, we don't, I guess we could cross that bridge if we don't wanna.
We'll spend more than sixteen thousand five hundred.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And we're gonna lose anyway.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that good?
That's good, as long as there's no questions, I know, that's complicated.
So this'll come back next board meeting.
Alright, um, four point eight is the resolution in support of the twenty twenty-five Colorado State Ballot Propositions LL and MM, providing funding for the Healthy School Meals for All program.
Yeah, so this, this came out, uh, I was at a meeting with a number of superintendents in the kind of front range area last week, and we started a conversation around these two ballot measures. There are some other boards in the front range who either have already, um, done a resolution or are considering doing a similar resolution to this, so I thought I would at least bring it to this board to see if it's something you would be interested in. Obviously, we have these two, uh, bond measures or ballot measures, sorry, that will have a direct impact on whether or not this Healthy School Meals for All continues. Um, if it were to not continue, then the funds that are remaining, based on our, based on our analysis that have been done, will run out. Um, we will have to go back to a program where the only students who would get free meals would be students who were um, either applied for free and reduced lunch, or were in very specific schools who maybe got the Healthy School Meals for All because of their, um, free and reduced lunch status. Um, but it would be, you know, the other challenge I would just say is that we, as a district, and I would agree with this stance, we feed kids. So a kid doesn't come through the line, doesn't have money in their account, we're still feeding kids. And so kids are, then will accrue debt in their lunch account. Um, and the reality is, and this is not a Thompson unique thing, this is everywhere in the country, we're not getting that money back. We're accruing, those kids are accruing debt, we're not collecting that money back, we're just, it's just not happening, so. It will have an impact, that, you know, we have to square those funds, we have to do. We have to do, we have to, you know, use the general funds or whatever we have to do to square those accounts at some point. This will have a a negative financial impact on the district and will have a negative impact on kids who are not able to eat. Um, so. As a board, or I think, you know, if you guys wanted to, wanted to talk about supporting two bond or ballot measures that are out there. Um, as a word, this would be two that I would definitely encourage, only because we know this has a huge impact on our kids. It came up when I met with the high school student advisory council kids the other day. They brought up um how important having the free meals is to them. Um, I have, you know, a couple of students in there who are, you know, in that position where they probably wouldn't qualify for free and reduced lunch. But they certainly don't have extra money at home for for food. And so um, yeah, just as I talked to the superintendents, it felt like at least something I should put in front of you all and give you the chance to decide if it's something you wanna support as a board. Um, if so, we would do it at the next board meeting and have passed that and at least as a board, say that we support the, you know, you support these two measures. So, yeah. Any questions? Do you guys have?
Questions about it?
Yeah.
Um. So I understand that, you know, the F F proposition was passed and that whoever wrote it put a limit in there of the hundred million, whatever. And so um L L is that the state can keep the twelve million dollars of excess from that that they collected.
Correct.
Um, M M is then changing, which doesn't make sense to me. If they collected an excess, they're changing it to ninety five million they will col- collect. But then they're saying that they will get to keep all the excess going forward forever. And they'll use um some of the funding to to fund the SNAP program. Um, I know that the SNAP program is a combination of state and federal and um. So some of the issues with the federal part of it is related to the fact that the federal government has said no more money for, to go to illegal immigrants. So I'm, I understand the need for feeding, but you know, I'm not in support of this relief, this resolution.
Sounds like hey, you can vote no too.
I will. I'm just letting you know.
That's fantastic. Thanks.
Okay, that's enough. Um, so we'll deal with this at our next meeting. If you have additional questions, you can send them to me, offer myself. Um, your blue book that you got a week ago, two weeks ago, that's what was in it.
Mm-hmm.
And it was, there was, that was all that was there. So if you have that, it'll answer a lot of your questions as well.
And certainly if there's anything specific in the wording of the resolution that you think needs to be changed, I'm looking to my English teacher on the board. If you see anything on there that we need to uh tweak, please send those my way. I think, you know, I borrowed this resolution mainly from other districts who've already done the work. So if you see anything that you think needs to be changed, please send those my way.
Um, how about if I contact Casby and ask Casby for a stance on these two resolutions?
Sure.
Not a stance. What's the word we're looking for?
Position.
A position or a?
Um, no, not, not permission. If they have a a position is is a better word than a stance uh on these. I, I think I already know the answer to this question, but I think it might behoove us to run this by our state organization to see what they think about this.
You bet.
And Stu, then email me if you'd like to read this.
I'm sorry?
You emailed me that you would like to read this.
Yes. At the next meeting. Okay.
Yes.
All right, then four point nine is the proclamation recognizing classified staff appreciation week. And Tiffany, you did.
This is Tiffany.
Yeah, okay.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Heller, I'm back to talk about classified staff. Um, making a proclamation to recognize our classified staff appreciation. As you know, our classified staff are key and essential to um our schools and we really wanna make this more um of a public um piece. So our community understands the value and the importance of our classified staff for the district. So we're asking that the board um actually declare October twentieth through the twenty fourth as classified staff appreciation. Any questions?
Any questions?
Checking something really quick. The calendar. It's a full school week, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. That was the like, the one thing that struck me. I know we got feedback at one point about something we did where they were like, it's the short week.
Yes. I think it's the week before is the one that's the short.
Yeah, that is a whole week.
Okay, great.
But I'll double check it. That's okay.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right. Any other questions or any comments? All right. Denise, I think you emailed me that you would.
Yes.
Read. I'll put you down for this one.
Thank you.
And I don't know about the next part. Do I need to stay up here for the next part?
Nope, I think you're good.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
All right, um. The last one, the next item is four point nine. There are standard action consent items. Um, that's personnel contracts greater than fifty thousand and donations. And I'll just draw on one of you to do the donations next time, okay? And then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Ebers.
Uh, good evening, um, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, uh, Dr. Heller, Bob Ebersold, Chief Financial Officer. I'm going to s- uh speak to two of the items on the agenda, um, Yuna Solutions, the contracts here. Um, so brief's history, Zach Moser, Director of Finance, was hired past January. I was hired in February. A quick assessment on how monthly financials were being done show that the information was downloaded from our accounting system and uh into Excel, manual manually calculated based on percentage of budget spent instead of budget to actual. Uh, that was true of the revenue received. Uh, and so we did it based on percentage, not actually when it would actually be received or spent during the year. Uh, in addition, we very quickly started working on the twenty five, twenty six budget, which were in this point, which is entirely Excel based with a majority of manual entry of information. Needless to say, that's not a good way to operate, uh, which I have explained to you and you reflected that back to me as well. While there is a budget component to our current software, it's transactional based as opposed to management driven. So it's accurate, it provides information, but does not really provide any information we'd like to. So the past four months, SAC has been leading the process to find useful budget tools. Um, he identifies specifications required, uh, web-based software, the ability to budget by month, multiple year budgeting function. Personnel budgeting, capital project budgeting, dashboards that can integrate into the school website. So it's available to parents, teachers, uh, schools, uh, and the general public. Uh, ability to develop an automated budget book to publish to the website. If you've seen that for other schools such as Littleton and other schools. They provide a lot of informations that's very useful. Um, integrating the budget with the Colorado Department of Education budget format. Uh, our um functionality to automatically go into our audit, uh, working with our auditors. Um, the requirement for multiple users to enter their own budgets, including schools and departments. Funding source designations, forecasting ability, um, uh, H R functionality and key performance measures. Uh, so we reviewed several companies, um, including when we were at conferences, we'd stop by a a a vendor and we'd say, can you do the following? If they say no, we'd just walk on by. Um, uh, so then we narrowed it down to two vendors, the Yuna Solutions, which we're recommending and Oracle. Um, each of these companies are on procurement consortiums, so we technically didn't have to do it on RFP process. Cause they were already in a a place where they'd already done that, but we wanted to actually have them present to us at the same time. So we'd have some additional information on that. We selected Yuna for the following reasons. Oracle's proposal was filled fulfilled through the use of three different entities who would be working at the same time and therefore finger pointing, that doesn't work. Uh, and the annual software cost was slightly less for Oracle, but the implementation cost was seven times.
What?
Oh.
Yep. When they can make money, they can make money.
Yeah.
So uh, in addition to that, um, Yuna is providing unlimited licenses, whereas Oracle is only gonna give us twenty five. So theoretically, every principal would have access to this software as well. They, this has been adopted by Aurora Public Schools, Douglas County School District, City of Greeley, City of Denver, Colorado State University and Para Retirement System. Uh, this is scheduled to be a six-month implementation process that will cover next year's budget process as well as uh we will roll it into reporting for the current fiscal year. Funding for the implementation will come from one-time funding in Fund Twenty Nine due to closeout of unexpendited funds. And the ongoing subscription subscription software will be funded within the Bus Business Services General Fund budget. So my my understanding is that when there are questions for budgets that we can, um, I can come and present discussions within this topic. So therefore you'll be able to get additional information on that. So I'm open to questions on this software.
Questions?
Uh, first, I'll just, um, I really appreciated that, um, Bob gave me a call and asked me to come and um, talk the same language as him on this budget stuff. I was like in heaven during the whole, the whole meeting. Um, and for me, the pricing is, um, I know for the average person, you know, where they get their Microsoft Office, this might seem. But the annual subscription price of a hundred thousand with unlimited licenses is really, is really good. Um, I went through this handout, which I, I don't know if you saw the email or I'd asked if you could send it to the rest of the board. Um, but it really does, it finally has all of the stuff that was missing, I think. No one was really aware that our current software system just did not have a budget modules, which is why everything was done in a spreadsheet. And so this will allow like the budget to be on the website, the schools to each have their own. The the what-if scenario, now I understand why it was such a nuisance for the finance staff. When it would be like, well, what if we do this? What if we gave stuff? Now it can just be, it can just be put in here. Um, and I think the biggest thing for me um is that this is the missing piece. And I'm just calling it the investment in transparency. And I think this is so big and so huge that I really think that once we improve this, and I'm hoping everybody um, that we should really um highlight this and somehow get the word out in the community, because this is really big. I did share it um with a couple of people and who I figured would probably like give me like, oh, Nancy, that's too much money. But they were like, they were like, thought this was, they thought this was great, much needed and agreed that this is really gonna just elevate our transparency to a whole new level, even like for the bond and capital. Because it has a whole section where you can put all of your capital projects, your bonds, track it. So everything would be in one place, integrated, not in multiple spreadsheets, multiple desks, multiple. I just, I know I'm, I'll wrap this up, but I just think it would, um, I just think it's a really great um investment for the district and for the community and the taxpayer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The the one thing I would say is that I would hesitate to announce what we're going to do. Um, Americans do that. The Japanese announce things that they've done. So I would like to do this as
Good point.
A footnote to say we're going to do this, but then we're gonna have like a ribbon cutting when we actually get it done and then say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bob regarding this?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for taking time to do that. Um, Stu, do you have anything on Casby?
Very, very brief.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Can I just say something very quick, not for you, Bob?
This is for, okay.
But on the personnel recommendations, I noticed that Ellen Javernick is retired.
I didn't see that.
Oh, no, which I think we need to make note of at the, at the meeting on the fifteenth.
Yes. Yeah, on, on the fifteen, yes.
Thank you for putting that out.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
I had that, yeah.
Could, could we invite her?
Those should be there?
Could we invite her for the meeting?
Please. Yeah.
We can ask.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
Could we invite her?
She's retired. Yeah, we'll ask her. We'll ask her if she wants to come. She's retired and she didn't say no, but we'll see. She's a.
Cause she, she's, I mean, she's been a teacher in the district like basically forever.
She was my fifty-year-old daughter's preschool teacher.
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, yeah, we will, we can reach out.
Yeah.
Yeah. I saw it on there.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, perfect. Okay, Stu, back to you.
So my, yes, my Casby report doesn't have anything to do with legislation. I have an update for you uh for the meeting that we hope to hold with the legislators. Uh, at our last discussion of this, we uh thought that we would need to do this on December seventeenth. But because um based on the information that Laura Lee had, it looks like the election will be certified by late November. Uh, the spec- and we're, we'll have a special meeting on December third to certify the election and to elect officers. Um, so I then contacted the legislators based on that, and I believe you, you're aware of this, and suggested that maybe we move what we thought was going to be December seventeenth to December third. So it would be easier in the month or earlier in the month. Best laid plans, I only have heard from one legislator, Senator Marchman, who's so disappointed because we selected the one night that she has a caucus that she has to attend. So I've not heard from the other legislators. Maybe I invited them too early. I invited them early so we would get on their calendar, but I haven't heard from anybody except Senator Marchman. So where I'm going with this long explanation is if it's all right with you, we're gonna hold both of those dates as possibles yet. I will send a reminder to the other legislators, and I've contacted Senator Marchman, said, can you hold December seventeenth in case that works for other people? And so I will let you know. Um, I still think it's a a great idea for us to meet with them. I contacted uh my contact at Casby, who said this is a really uh important opportunity for a school board to meet with legislators. Perhaps even more important for the legislators than it is for the school board, for them to actually hear from people who are gonna be affected by decisions that they make. So uh at this point, I don't have a date for you, but we will meet with at least one legislator on either December third or December seventeenth. And thank you for tolerating a rather lengthy explanation of this, but I wanted you to know what was going on.
Okay, thank you. Um, Laura Lee.
Mm-hmm.
On the December third is an actual study session night.
Yes.
But that still has to be a special meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes, before the study session.
Okay.
We have to.
Oh, that's right, cause we have to, to vote. Okay, all right, got it? Okay.
A special meeting had on.
Yeah, for that piece.
Yeah, before.
Yeah. All right, we are now moving on to um our discussion item for tonight, which is six point one student achievement and performance achievement update. And we have Sarah and Carrie.
Good evening again. Sarah Rassellson, Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services.
Carrie Marvin, Director of Assessment and Evaluation.
And so yes, um, this evening we are going to just go through again the information regarding the state of um our district performance and be able to continue answering the questions. I think it's catching up. That's okay. Yeah, we got it. Okay, so um just a reminder, every year we receive a district performance framework and our schools receive a school performance frameworks. These frameworks have ratings on them and also share how we are doing um as a district with growth and achievement. And these performance frameworks are what we use as a district and where our schools use to build our school, our district unified improvement plans and our school unified improvement plan. So it doesn't share everything that we're doing, but what are we doing to address the needs that we see in our performance frameworks? So we have um some areas that we would like to highlight, um, some areas of success. Again, we are green, so we are in performance and accredited based off of our performance framework. Our academic increased overall on our district performance framework. We increased the number of schools that would fall into accredited with distinction. And this is a category that um the state does not recognize with schools. They do with districts, but not with schools. And yet we still feel like that's important and we wanna recognize that.
Absolutely.
We have, uh, our high schools have been accredited with performance for the second year in a row. So that's all of our high schools. We saw significant growth in our SAT scores in both um evidence-based reading and writing as well as math. Elementary C math scores outperform the state in both English Language Arts and in math. Our graduation rate is maintaining high performance at ninety percent and the twenty-three of our thirty schools are accredited with performance status. Our graduation rate is maintaining high performance at ninety percent, and the twenty-three of our thirty schools are accredited with performance status.
I had the opportunity to meet with all of you, each of you, and really in-depth go through our district performance framework. Uh, we'll be happy to take any questions if any came to mind from the, um, two plus two meetings. I'm not going to in-depth go through that with you again tonight though for the sake of time. However, just in looking at the front page there, as Sarah said, we are again accredited with the state at sixty point five percent. Um, at the bottom of that first page, it shows elementary, middle and high school, and our elementary and our high schools were accredited again this year, and our middle school was in improvement. To give you a glance over time, our trend framework data shows, um, this year we were sixty point five percent. Last year we were at sixty point nine percent. Twenty twenty-three, we were accredited, but we were actually on improvement. And then in twenty twenty-two, we were at fifty-six point eight percent. We were still trending in that sixtieth percentile way above. In twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we did not receive, uh, a DPF, nor did our schools receive the SPF through the COVID period. It was kind of a, we're just staying neutral. However, previous to the twenty twenty, we were in the fifties as well. So the fact that the last two years we have been in the sixties is phenomenal growth for our district.
Yeah, awesome.
And as Sarah said, out of our thirty schools, this year we have twenty-three of our schools that are on performance status. This means that, uh, last year each of our schools had to write a, uh, school unified improvement plan, as did we as a district. If you maintain performance status, you get to exercise biennial flexibility is what it's called. And so these schools get to update their goals for us, but they don't have to submit anything new to the state for the year. Five of our schools are on improvement status this year. They will be redoing and updating their unified improvement plans and submitting, uh, those to the state by October fifteenth. We did not have any schools on priority improvement, and we do have two schools that are on turnaround status. Those two schools are Peak View Academy and Lorene Edmondson, as I spoke to you about in the two plus twos. Both of those, uh, schools qualify for a request to reconsider. The data that they're able to use is our I-ready data from kindergarten through second grade. Those scores in achievement and growth offset what their scores were on their SPF's, school performance frameworks, and so we are able to request a reconsideration. Those are both due also on October fifteenth. The state will vote on those in December. If we are approved for that, both schools will move to priority improvement. It doesn't change their score, it just changes their status. Okay? We will bring that update of what the board voted on or how they vote, voted in January. Then, uh, both principals as well as their SAC president or their chair are, are invited to that board meeting in January. And then you get to see what their unified improvement plans look like and approve those. No matter whether they're staying in turnaround or are on priority improvement, that is a step we take with you. All right, so now we're gonna dig into our actual CMAS data scores for the year as well as our PSAT SAT. These graphs are going to show you all of our students that met or exceeded expectations and compare those to the state of Colorado. So on the left-hand side, you are going to see in colors, these are our district, uh, scores for the year, so the last three years of trend data, twenty-two, twenty-three, all the way to this past year, twenty-four, twenty-five. And the gray bars are how the state of Colorado performed in those three years. On the left-hand side, we have English Language Arts for elementary, and as you can see, we grew and outperformed the state at forty-four point eight percent this year. For middle school, we were at forty-four point one percent, seeing great growth as a district at growing three percentage points. We're still a little bit below the state, but definitely closing the gap. It wants to. It's like that pause when you want your students to speak. All right, here are disaggregated populations. Our Hispanic Latino students also showed excellent growth this year, going from twenty-four point two percent to twenty-six point eight percent, met and exceeded, and we outperformed the state by point three percent. Our multilingual learner students grew by point one tenth of a point. We're still below the state by a little bit. I'm gonna pause here. Nancy had asked a question in the two plus two that I have an answer to. How, she asked, well, how many languages are multilingual learner students? How many do we serve? In elementary this year, we had nineteen separate languages, and in middle school, we had ten different languages. The majority were Spanish. I can't give you the numbers of all of the other languages because it was fewer than five students, and I can't do an N size less than sixteen. However, approximately a hundred and sixty of the hundred and ninety-ish students were Spanish-speaking and all the rest filtered the others. In our students with IEPs, we saw a significant drop a couple of years ago, as you, all of you mentioned actually in that meeting. And so I did some data digging for you, and one of the big pieces that I saw was that the number of students we have on IEPs has dropped substantially since twenty-two, twenty-three. And so with sixteen point nine percent, um, having met and exceeded two years ago, that was out of a thousand sixty-three students. In this last year at ten point five percent met and exceeded, there were only seven hundred and seventy-eight. So we've, we may have declining enrollment overall going on, but we definitely have a declining number of students that are identified as IEP, taking the, um, CMAS assessment as well. So just some initial anecdotal data is that we have far fewer students taking the test as well. Economically disadvantaged students grew by point three percent this year, and our gifted and talented students are hovering and staying steady in the ninety-second percentile and still outperforming the state in third through eighth grade ELLA. Math, so again, the charts are, will be the same as we walk through these. Elementary math on the left, middle school math on the right, and similar bars. Our district at level data over the last three years are on the left, state level data on the right. Math at elementary level, um, we're continuing to see those bars go growing, which is great, as we are in middle school as well. The growth is smaller at middle school, but growth is growth, and we're having more students in the met and exceeds area. We outperformed the state, as Sarah said, was a huge, um, celebration for both, um, in elementary for both ELLA and math this year, so forty point four percent. And our math scores are at twenty-seven point four percent, so we're growing just slower growth than what we are doing at elementary. And our disaggregated populations. Similarly, uh, Hispanic Latino students seeing great growth in our met and exceeds at sixteen point nine percent, closing the gap with the state level at seventeen point nine, so we're only one percentage point away. Saw growth with our multilingual learner students as well at four point two percent, so outperforming where we've been the last couple of years. Still underperforming the state, however, again, closing that gap. Students on IEPs saw about a percentage point rebound from the year before. Similar, uh, scores at point three percent above for economically disadvantaged, and however, we are outperforming the state there as well. And we did see a drop in our gifted and talented students this year, um, in the math arena by about two point eight percent. Different colors, different test. Here is PSAT SAT. You're gonna notice we only have two bars of information here because we've only been taking this assessment online for the last two years. The test is entirely different now, and so we, it wouldn't make sense to give you paper level data. They've re-normed everything, and so we only have two years of data total that we can follow for trend data analysis purposes. And so the two bars you see on the left are how our, our students have scored the last two years in our district. Similarly, um, Colorado is in the gray as a state. And so ninth grade PSAT, um, evidence-based reading and writing is gonna be on the left, PSAT nine, ten and SAT for our juniors. You're gonna see that we dipped a little bit in our PSAT nine growth, um, evidence-based reading and writing as well as PSAT ten. PSAT ten overall, um, saw a significant decline in evidence-based reading and writing this year as a state, um, and nationally actually. And then we saw significant growth, um, on the SAT. So they're doing some analysis of what happened in tenth grade versus eleventh grade, what was the test actually like, how difficult was it? But our juniors outperformed the state by almost seven percentage points this year, which is incredible in evidence-based reading and writing. On the math side, ninth grade dropped just a little bit, um, consistent with the state drop. We grew in PSAT ten on the math, similarly at, just like the state did. And also, um, eleventh grade SAT, similar. We had better gains than the state. We're not quite where the state is, but we're seeing, seeing the gains. So we follow the same trend pattern as what the state of Colorado did this year. So last year, as I said, we're using biennial flexibility. We said that by the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, that we are focused would be our multilingual learner students and our students with disabilities, and that they would achieve a median growth percentile rating of fiftieth percentile in both English Language Arts and Math as measured by our DPF. I'm going to show you those results now. On the left-hand side of the screen, you're gonna see our elementary, and then on, uh, at the top in the middle school at the bottom. All students are in the blue on the left. Our students that are identified as multilingual learners are in the orange, and our students on IEPs are in the light gray. You're going to see, uh, down at the bottom, we have five years of trend data for you. On twenty twenty-five is what I'm going to focus on because we were, which is the bars fully to the right of each of those categories. We're looking for the fiftieth percentile, as I said, because those were our goals. In elementary, for all students, we did meet that goal at fifty-one percent. However, when you look at multilingual learners, you're gonna see that they are at forty-five percent, so we have a six percentage point gap there. And then our students on IEPs were at forty-three percent, and so we missed the mark by seven percentage points there for our students on IEPs. In middle school, you're gonna see that all students, um, we only saw forty-five percent growth, and so we didn't hit our goal for overall. So obviously our disaggregated groups are also not going to meet. Um, multilingual learners was at forty percent, and our students on IEPs was at thirty-seven percent. Tenth grade and eleventh grade, we didn't have enough, um, to measure for multilingual learners, as I talked to you about. For grade ten, we were at fifty-one percent, grade eleven was fifty-two point five, and so all students met in, um, evidence-based reading and writing. However, our students on IEPs were right there for both grade ten and eleven at forty-eight percent. All right, this is math, elementary and middle school math. Um, again, our growth goals were, um, for fiftieth percentile, uh, we didn't hit it for all students in either category. Okay? So forty-six point five percent in elementary, um, multilingual learners was thirty-ninth percentile, and students on IEPs was at forty-third percentile. Middle school, we were at forty-third percentile, multilingual learners were at thirty-six, students on IEPs were at thirty-nine. PSAT math, PSAT nine, ten and SAT math growth data. We did have enough for our multilingual learner category here in ninth grade for growth. Ninth grade had right at fiftieth percent, however, our multilingual learners was at twenty-nine point five percent. And our students on IEPs were at eighteen percent. I talked to all of you about some anecdotal reasons for this. One is these students are already coming in at either a language deficit in some capacity, and they have some sort of disability. We're asking these students to go from a platform of taking the CMAS test in one component to the PSAT nine test on another entire computer platform. So they're going from Test Nav to Blue Book. Then inside of that, they're taking this test on computer. The test itself is entirely different. CMAS, how it's set up and done, and how the PSAT nine is set up and done are entirely different. How they're scored is entirely different. The CMAS test, you read a body of evidence, or you read a, a summary. You may have some multi, multiple choice, then you have to write about it. In, on the math side, you have to explain your thinking on the CMAS test. Every single thing for PSAT nine, ten and SAT is multiple choice. There is no explain what you're thinking here. So just the testing format in general is entirely different. Is this the sole reason our students have such low growth here? Absolutely not. But I do believe because we're seeing such better growth in tenth and eleventh grade, they understand the platform much better. But this is their first time utilizing, taking an entirely different test from the one they've had for the last six years, as well as an entirely different platform that they are navigating. So in tenth grade, then we saw the growth go back up to fortieth percentile for students on IEPs. And then, um, in SAT, it was at thirty-ninth percent comparative to our fifty-one percent overall population. So I'm gonna totally shift you gears as I did the last time, and now we're gonna go all the way to our littles, kindergarten, first and second grade. The rest of the slides you're gonna see is our I-ready data, as kindergarten, first and second do not take CMAS or PSAT or SAT yet. And so they take the I-ready assessment three times a year, at beginning of year, middle of year and end of year. And we wanted to give you some of that data because in our Strive twenty twenty-five plan, we have our reading, our students will be reading at third grade, um, a hundred percent on proficiency, correct? Simple, I just analyze, butchered that a little bit. So here we go, this is last year's twenty, ending May of twenty twenty-five data. So how to read these charts is on the right-hand side, this is our district. Where the state of Colorado landed is the bar next to that, the third one over, our national scores, where the nation ended kindergarten, first and second grade, and all the way on the left is our normed data, which was done post-COVID in the spring of twenty-two, twenty-three. You can see that our kindergarten students, seven hundred and sixty-three of them, out of those students, eighty-seven percent were reading on grade level when they exited our building, last, buildings last year. In first grade, we had sixty-two percent reading on grade level, with thirty-six percent just below grade level. And the red there is not even measurable, it's like barely there, so maybe one percent were falling to, um, more than a grade level behind. In second grade then, um, you can see we had, um, sixty-four percent reading on grade level, twenty-six percent about a grade level behind, and nine percent that had fallen to two grade levels or more below. To break it down a little more for you, then I walked you through, um, all of the different categories that they're tested on. As you can see, everything in dark blue means we're above the national average greater than five percentage points. Everything in light blue is we're above the national average between zero and five percentage points. Dark gray is below one to five percent, and the shaded gray area is the greater than five percent below. There's only one area where we are below, and it is in high frequency words. Uh, Sarah will talk to that a little bit more. However, with the change in our curriculum, that has really changed a lot. They really wanna have students making meaning versus doing the flashcards of seeing the same sight words over and over and over, and so that practice has actually changed a lot, especially with the science of reading, and I'll let Sarah talk more to that. But that's an, that was an interesting find that we had because that's really where you get those high frequency words, and so that's something we're definitely looking at. However, we were so pleased with all of the deeper level thinking skills and what they have to pull out, and how well our students are performing in, in all of the other areas. Thanks, Laura Lee. All right, so this is our comparative data from fall to spring for each of these students. So this is when they're coming into us, so how they started in kindergarten at the beginning of the year and how they ended. How they started in fifth grade and where they ended. And so this shows you how much growth actually took place for each of these students that took both the fall assessment and the spring assessment. And as you can see, substantial growth is taking place in each of our buildings and maintaining where, you know, where they're at, how many of those students who might just be a little bit below where they are, and how many of them move into on grade level by the end of the year. Amazing decrease, um, decreases in third, fourth and fifth grade in that dark red shaded group, you know, five percentage point improvement in third grade, eight percentage point improvement in fourth grade, four percentage improvement. four percentage improvements in fifth grade. So you can see how hard our teachers are working to get our students on grade level. This chart shows you how we go, this is this year. So I only have one data point for you because we've only taken our beginning of year assessment. And so this is going to show you how students are coming in at the beginning of the year, the last three years. If you would like to follow some trend data, this would mean if you wanna look at where second graders are for twenty-five, twenty-six, they were first graders in twenty-four, twenty-five and they were kindergartners in twenty-three, twenty-four. That is that same cohort of student if you, um, care to look back a few year, the last three years. However, we're very consistent with where our students are starting when they come into us. Also, please note, yellow in the beginning of the year is actually on grade level because they have not been taught the information yet. We're asking them, what do you already know coming into kindergarten? What do you already know of first grade standards? What do you already know of fifth grade standards? So if I'm teaching fifth grade, what I'm asking myself truly is, I have sixteen percent of my students that already know all of the content. What am I going to do with that sixteen percent this year? I have twenty-one percent that are on grade level and know the majority of my content. What am I going to do for them this year? I have twenty-seven percent that are going to get there because they're, they're here and they just wanna learn fifth grade. I have twenty-two percent that are a little below. So what interventions are being put in place? What are they accessing in tier-one instruction? What kinds of things do we need to do? And then obviously for our fourteen percent there, how many of them are identified on a read plan? How many of them maybe have a reading disability that they already have an IEP for, et cetera? And obviously, you can go way deeper and the teachers do and they know who those students are and they get access to all of that data. But that's really how you read the beginning of year for where our students are. And this is where we performed, um, um, according to the national standards as well as how Colorado did for this fall. And so as you can see, we are very competitive. We're actually outperforming, you know, where the, the national average is. There were six, um, million, six-point-one million that took it in Colorado. I'm sorry, nationally, six-point-one million, a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand took it in the state of Colorado. And we had seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-nine kindergarten through eighth graders take the fall assessment this year.
So as we've gone through this data, we have identified areas of focus. And we, we identified those areas of focus actually last year. And we're continuing to refine our areas of focus and how we are addressing the, the needs that we have, um, uncovered and continue to uncover as we look at our data and walk our classrooms. And so the areas of focus that we have is that we are really, um, ensuring that our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities are having the best educational opportunities in front of them. We also are ensuring that we have consistent growth in EOL and math at all levels because although we saw an increase in our achievement, we didn't see a decrease in our growth. And then we continue to work on our students' sense of belonging because we also know that those go human. So now what? These are, um, the strategies that we are implementing throughout our district. And the instructional framework is, um, a framework that is grounded in evidence and research-based practices. And we are expecting that each of our students, um, are able to have the, the high level and high-quality instructional experience that, uh, their, their student across, the student across town has as well. We want that consistency and we wanna be able to say that no matter what school you're in, no matter what classroom you're in, um, we are going to give you the best education possible. And that's our instructional framework provides. So our instructional framework is on the right. And what we started with was at a, at a district level on the left, we said, these are the things that we're really going to focus on. But then we needed to make sure that it became something that our schools, our school leaders and our teachers can really understand. This is what it looks like, um, to implement this instructional framework into our district. So everything in our instructional framework has had, um, we've had time in our system to provide professional learning around. So there's nothing new in here that people would say, oh, my gosh, I've never seen this. Um, we've had training and professional learning and coaching around these, um, different areas. So within our instructional framework, um, at the very center, we talk about, we, that we have a belief that each student will learn, grow and achieve at high levels. We wanna be very clear about what high levels of learning means. It means that we are, um, we are expecting our students to be at grade level or higher by the end of each year. And when we say all, we mean every single student that we are expecting to, uh, walk out our doors and be independent, productive citizens. So all of our students are expected to be learning at those high levels. Um, as you see around, we, that was the center. I briefly wanna touch on, um, the domains around. So we talk about the inclusive and supportive learning environment. That goes right along with our sense of belonging. The intentional instructional planning, I'll talk a little bit more about what that means for us. But, um, it's really around the importance of preparing for the lesson each and every day because each student in our classrooms is different and unique. And then the facilitation of learning. It's, notice it's facilitation of learning and not the givers of knowledge because we know that we have to facilitate, um, and help our learners own their own learning and have conversations and, um, engage in the content. And then assessment and evaluation through PLCs. We also know that we have to make sure that we have a really solid grasp on where each student is. And we do that through, um, just daily check-ins with our kids as well as having more structured, um, PLC conversations within our, um, teams in our schools. So this is what that looks like. That's, if you were to dig into each one of those domains, you can actually click on those links and it will bring up what we're talking about. So that if there's any questions, our teachers and our administrators have resources and tools right in front of them. So off to the right, we've just started to list and we actually did this as an activity for, um, our administrators. We said, these are the things that we're doing. Have conversations about how it fits into our, um, instructional framework. So we'll go through each one of these, um, as we continue with the now what. But we're looking at universal design for learning, our continuous improvement teamwork, cooperative learning, uh, All Learners Network, which is the organization we've partnered with around math pedagogy, PLTs. So again, this, I, I will clarify what this is. We've, during our, um, work with continuous improvement teams, we shifted from PLCs, the professional learning community, because that's really that overarching, um, umbrella. A school would be a PLC. But when their grade level teams come together and have those student, um, very specific student conversations, we're calling that a PLT, just to have that, um, differentiation between the two.
So the T is for team?
T is for team, yes. And then finally, our curricular materials. We have, um, as you all know, we have a, a great, um, thorough process for curricular material adoption and, um, those are the materials we expect to be used in our classrooms. So our continuous improvement teams, we're continuing to work on our warm welcomes and our classroom agreements. We're also continuing to focus on how do we restore and repair when those agreements are broken? So that was some of the work we did last year that is continuing into this year. Our focus for this coming year is that we are going to engage with, um, uh, the Hannigans. They have actually, um, authors, they have authored behavior solutions. And we are in the process of really, um, helping our teachers and our leaders understand, what does it look, what is basically pro-academic behavior and pro-social behavior? And then what's the tier-one? And then how do we respond when we're not seeing, um, the results that we're hoping for? How do we support our students? And that's our work of this year. So as you know, we have, um, adopted benchmark literacy. And this goes right along with that early literacy data that we were looking at before. We saw that this was a need because, as you also know, our literacy data has been fairly flat and stagnant and not moved. We have had extensive training in the science of reading and our previous materials did not align with that training. And so we are really trying to make things work and piecing things together. And that's, that's hard. That's hard work. And so we have now, um, adopted a wonderful, um, literacy, um, curricular material that is going to, um, help support implementing science of reading in our classrooms. As well as the materials to support our multilingual learners and our students with disabili-, our students with disabilities. Because what we know is, um, already we have students that they are receiving perhaps different services and then it becomes disjointed is now they're, they're, they could be pulled from their classroom. It could be a push-in model. But it needs to be content that, that is aligning so that their, um, their day is more seamless than not. And then to go along with the planning portion, um, the intentional planning with our instructional framework, we saw a need to help build our, um, leader and our teacher's capacity just around putting more tools in their toolbox. For how do we plan for that learner variability in each of our classrooms? And, um, we know that our teachers work really hard and our leaders work really hard and we wanted to just make sure that we are providing the best resources possible. So universal de- design for learning, um, there's a line in there that I really appreciate. It said it's, it's rooted in the belief that barriers to learning exist in the design of instruction and not in the learner. And so as we are working with our, um, staff, we're really helping them understand how to have flexibility in their learning environment so that all students, no matter the ability, um, their background, whatever it is, the uniqueness that they are bringing into the classroom, that they are able to be as successful as possible. So these are just the outcomes that we have identified as we look at, um, the training that lies ahead for our, um, teachers and our leaders. And currently, our secondary staff is engaging in the training. They are engaging in the training of UDL. We were not going to overload our elementary staff as they are also learning benchmark literacy. And that's, we can't do too much. That's not fair. So, um, elementary will start engaging in this work next year. And then we are also doing instructional tours. And I know we had a chance to talk about this during the, the time that we were meeting. Um, we've, we've been able to, so our instructional tours are an opportunity for our learning services leadership to, um, partner with our school leadership. And the really great thing about this partnership is that we have the opportunity to say, um, or to ask, what is it that you're needing in the schools and how can we support you? What is implementation looking like? And again, how can we support you? And during our last, um, EC twelve that we had where we bring all of our leaders together, we actually broke up into our instructional tour groups. And so our, um, our leaders, our learning services leaders met with, with building-based leadership. And they went through a problem of practice as a team as it related to their, um, school, uh, unified improvement plan because they were making some adjustments. So already we've started, um, to work on that partnership. And then this past week, they were in buildings doing walkthroughs and having conversations about how, how are your warm-up and welcomes going? How are your classroom agreements going? What supports do you need? And then we, um, we bring back that information so we know how to better support our schools in the implementation, um, of those different initiatives. So that's what our instructional tours are all about. And then, uh, we also have some program-specific reviews. So as we identified, um, the areas that we are really focusing on, we have our, um, students with disabilities as well, our, as our multilingual learners. So we're currently in year three of a five-year review seminar for special education programs. And in November, we are going to, um, begin a cultural and linguistically diverse education review. This is in partnership with the Colorado Department of Education. So we'll get some really great information from them identifying the areas of strength and perhaps opportunities then where we can, um, better meet the needs of each of those students.
That was a lot. Yeah, questions? Got questions?
I actually have several. Do you want me to ask one? Then we'll go around and then you can come back to me.
Well, depends on how deep these are.
I don't think any of them are really deep. I think they're gonna be pretty, uh, pretty quick to answer. First is, is just a request, Carrie. When you're presenting data, would it be possible for you to use a laser pointer, uh, to identify part, places on the screen that you're actually talking about? Um, I had this problem the other day when we had, were involved in the two plus twos and you were talking about something and I was looking on the paper at that time for where you were. Sometimes I found it, sometimes I didn't. It would be useful for me, uh, if you could use some kind of a pointer when you're going through the data. So we've identified goals for students who are, um, multilingual, students who are on IEPs and then one of your last slides dealt with special ed. Have you selected areas on which to focus for the students who are not in some of these groups? In other words, let me see if I can clarify my question. So for the, I'm gonna, gonna make up a number, eighty-five percent of, of the students who are not in one of these special groups, are they covered by the information in the now what slides? And maybe a couple of subsequent slides related to UDL? I guess the reason I'm asking the question is I wanna make sure that the bulk of our students, the majority of our students who don't fit into a particular category, are being considered also in regard to areas of, uh, growth and performance.
Absolutely. So I can, I will answer that. There's a few things. First of all, we are starting with our grade level standards. And we wanna make sure that each of our students has access to grade level standards, which is why in our instructional framework, we talk about high levels of learning. Because we know that in order for our students to grow and achieve, they have to have access to those grade level standards. So the, the ways that we are able to do that would be through, um, the instructional materials that we have, um, that we have adopted and we are expected to be used in our classrooms. When I think about the work that we've done, say, let's go back to, um, All Learners Network with our math pedagogy. Everything that we're doing is how do you ensure that each student in the classroom has access and opportunity to, um, meet those grade level standards? The same expectation is for actually any of our materials, that we are using those to make sure that each of our students has access to grade level content at the level that is, um, is the level that is going to get them either to or beyond our grade level standards. The, um, UDL work is absolutely appropriate for every single student in our classrooms. Because what we're doing is we are saying, we're, we're exposing you to grade level content. We are facilitating that learning. But now learners, no matter, no matter how you want to approach the, um, the content, we have some opportunities for you that might fit your learning style, your background, your needs a little bit better. And that can be for our multilingual learners. It can be our students who, as you said, it's the eighty-five percent of the others, but they still walk in with. but they still walk in with unique learning experiences that we need to make sure we're addressing.
And then my last question, Carrie, is for you. The slide that was entitled DUIP results. You don't have to look at it, it's not a specific question, it's a question that deals with the information in general, I think. Are our results similar to the state's results on the various parts of that slide?
For what your DUIP looks like?
Yes.
I can definitely pull that and let you know, the state posts these are unofficial results and then the entire state wants all of the requests to reconsiderers and things are done, they will list off every single district and it's right on CDE's website, but I can pull that for you.
At whatever point it's available, I would appreciate seeing her.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And they may have, they may have the unofficial scores now, I'll look and see, but we'll get the official ones in December.
Okay. And there's, there's no hurry on this, but at some point I'd be interested in that.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Um, just curious, can you speak a little more about where you're at or what's involved in the special ed program review?
So the last two years were spent reviewing our ALC program. And this year, we are, we are looking at the ILC Program Intensive Learning Center. And the next two years would be focused on our learning center. Patty, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
We also have an eye for our transition programs. Definitely something that has come up through our CAC. So the transitions into Delta eighteen to twenty-one and even starting in high school on their path for career. So that will be also in the queue, we have somebody from the state we've been talking to. So, but yes, this year, this, these reviews are actually from our big improvement from CDE for our special education review that we did. It's part of our improvement strategy is to get our programs reviewed, audited, and then put some stronger things in place to help our students most correct practices.
Do you look at curriculum or, I mean, cause I know he's unique curriculum and that's been around for, just wondering about. Curriculum, I know that we give a lot of, you know, we're constantly looking at gen ed curriculum and pushing in a lot of support for curriculum, but I didn't know about the unique curriculum and what kind of, if that has ever been looked at? If we give any kind of ongoing support or any kind of support to teachers or that?
That's a great question and yes, so when we use unique, there is onboarding and ongoing professional learning that. We have found that our usage of that is pretty minimal.
Why is that?
Um, and so that's, that is, that will be definitely, yep. So that will definitely be coming up in our audit. There's a few different things that we are looking at with those programs and one of it is what are the appropriate resources for that? We really need to look at deep dive across. This year, we are implementing the portion from benchmark for the literacy with our special education staff. And so we're looking at how those results are along with our multilingual learners. We may need to add one more layer for students who may have really significant dyslexic or learning disabilities, like a Willson or those kinds of things. But we're really looking at what does this do for the majority of our students in special ed? That work needs to be done at all levels though, for sure.
Alexandra, any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. What is the, of the two schools, PQ and? What's the advantage of being like reconsidered to be considered the priority improvement instead of? If, since like the scores have changed, like what, what a practical difference does it make?
It looks, it looks better instead of being red, moving to orange.
There's, there's no practical difference, it's purely a, it feels better to have that rather than turn it around in front of her.
Okay, but they still have to do the same things and we still agree with their, as you have been, all that stuff.
That's correct. And, and I think it should be, yes, and it justifies to the state that our K-two data can offset our three-five data. So we do have that continuum of growth taking place at our early levels or early primary levels. It just didn't show and reflect in the third, third through fifth grade levels.
And then I know you talked about a lot of like the Now What and the area of focus and stuff like that. Can you talk a little bit more about like if there, I mean, I guess sort of related to Amy's question, but about like, you know, since that, that growth goal was for the fifty percent growth for the multilingual and for the IEP students and we didn't meet that, what are some specific interventions that are being put in place to address that, that group? I mean, it's also sort of the opposite of Stu's question.
Yeah, no, and that's great. So one of the, I mean, that's actually a part of why we went with universal design for learning. Because we're not meeting the needs of, of all of our students, including the student groups that you just mentioned. And they are all, all of our students. So you know, our, our classroom teacher that, that has, every single one of those students is responsible for designing lessons so that each of our students can access that. So that's what we want to equip, equip our teachers with as well as, as our leaders so they have a support. The other part of that is also our benchmark literacy. So we strategically purchased the components for multilingual learners as well as our students with disabilities so that our teachers have solid resources that align with benchmark. So it's not this disjointed day for the, for our students because that's, that's the last thing that they need. Especially if they're navigating a different language or different, you know, areas of learning that they need more support with. So those are the two major things that we are working with right now. Now, I will also say that our, the work that we have been doing around math pedagogy with All Learners Network is the same thing. So what we know is that within our classrooms themselves, we need to do a better job of meeting, meeting the needs of, of each of our students. Now, as far as you mentioned the interventions, that's where as we bring in the Department of Education, they really are looking at our program and saying, well, what are we providing? What's their day look like? How can we, what tweaks do we need to make? What successes can we build on? And so that's the information we're going to get come, I guess it'll be after November, but when they come in November.
Okay. And then my last question is sort of how is, in, in the secondary schools or middle, middle schools, how is the universal design, like what's, how are the teachers learning it or being supported in, in the adoption? And so what's that process going to look like?
Yes, so we are doing that for middle schools and our high schools. Yep, yep, so it's both. And so far, we've had, let's see, three days, is that right? Two days. Yeah, I see a two over there, two days. We've had two days of training around universal design for learning. So we're still at the beginning stages, like the very, very beginning. But what we're trying to do is even model what that looks like. As, and, and in fact, we have, the organization is CAST. CAST is coming to our district October sixteen and they will be.
Perfect timing.
So they will be working with our learning services leadership. So we know how to better provide professional learning to our staff so we can model what this looks like. So we're still at the very beginning stages of just trying to figure out all of this out and what it means for our classrooms.
Cause I think, I mean, I think it sounds great, but I think it's also important that teachers feel comfortable and, you know, using it and don't feel like it's something that's just like
Absolutely.
thrown at them, it's just like, here's this other thing you have to do. But they, they actually are, you know, equipped to, to take advantage of it. And hopefully we'll get that on board and help them enjoy it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Bernice?
Yeah, so looking at the math scores, you know, being lower. Do we have a math curriculum that we use or in, in elementary? How are we addressing it from a curriculum standpoint?
So this is, we are in our second, we are in our third year. We, so we have InVision. And InVision is what we brought, brought in alongside All Learners Network. Because we know that you can have a, you can have a good, you can have a great math program, but if you don't know how to teach it, then you still have mediocre results. And so that's why we felt like it was really important. We see our data increasing, which is exactly what we would hope for. It was low, I mean, so we, we are seeing it move in the right direction, which tells us that we're doing the right things. We just need to keep our expectations around ensuring that these are the practices that we're using because it's still new. This is, you know, it's a new program and it's new pedagogy. The way that we're having our teachers teach math is not the way that they learned math. So we just need to make sure that we're continuing the training, which we do. We actually continue to support by having at the elementary level, cause that's where it started first. We have coaches from All Learners Network coming into the building. So they have the personalized coaching time to really meet the needs specific to that building. So we're just continuing the work that we're doing and not letting them on the gas.
Secondary uses big ideas for their curriculum and same thing onboarding. I was able to be in, I get, I get the middle schools this year and I was able to be a part of a couple of different buildings where they had just had their All Learners Network coach in this last week. And they modeled a lesson for their sixth through eighth grade teachers and then made a plan for, okay, how are you going to implement this math menu? And what, what does this look like and set dates for them and then they come back and revisit it. It's, they're, they're very much so involved in that step by step, like I do, you do, we do. Like, you know, like modeling process, so it's really fun to see.
Thank you.
And I'll just add just real quickly on all of it, between benchmark, whatever we're doing with math, already as I've gone into classrooms, I've gone with Sarah and Brandy and Sarah and Carmen, we've gone in and we're seeing these practices happening in classes. So teachers are, we're encouraging them just to try, like getting, you have to just jump in and just start using these things to get more comfortable with it, our principals know what it should look like. So it's, we're seeing it in, in process right now.
I just wanna do like a little shout out for the UDL and like what I think that'll mean. So the standard of teaching and hope, hoping the masses get it has been a lot, right? That's a lot of work already, right? And I, but that's kind of the norm is like, I'm gonna throw this idea out there, teach it in the best way I know how, I've got all these good things. And then ideally, you know, enough kids get it, then we can keep moving and flowing. And by switching to say, how can I teach this in a way so that I know every kid is gonna get it? Especially the kids who are challenged to access it when I throw it out there the way I have been, all the kids get it then. And we're not purposely leaving out twenty percent of the kids who get further, further higher, longer than that goes on. And so I just love it when I get to see that happen because when you teach it in a way that like everybody can get it, everybody gets it. So to your point, we don't lose kids by choosing one group of kids over another, which technically is kind of the norm that we've had as the standard for a long time. The other thing that I'm really excited about with UDL is that for a lot of students, their instruction, because they were into one of the disaggregated groups, their instruction came outside the classroom. So if they qualify for minutes because they're a multilingual learner or a kid with a special education and they're getting extra time with, that was maybe one-on-one or small group, it would replace what they learned in the classroom. So they still only learned it once, they just maybe learned it in a different environment. Which isn't great for how important social learning is. Secondly, though, by doing UDL and switching the way that we've done those small groups and pullouts as much as possible, what happens is that the kids who need the most support are actually getting to have their minutes be focused on the things that they still have questions about, that things they're struggling with. So they actually get double the amount of time with instruction in some way instead of one or the other and then hoping they get it with the one that they got. And so, I mean, that's why we see the great results over and over and over again. And I would just say, to put it back to Kerry Martin, like this is sharpening the saw. And I hundred percent agree how stressful it is to learn a new thing and I think we're doing it the right way. But the thing that I love so much is when teachers have that moment when it, it's now good for them and not just something that's good for kids, right? That moment when they go, oh, that was worth my time. I sharpened the saw, I spent the time doing the work upfront so that the kids can learn and that's worth it to me because then I don't spend time trying to catch kids up the way that we do in this flipped model we have. And I just love it and I want that for all of them because it's such a beautiful thing. And then you really do get to hone in on, oh, this is where I can make that time more worthwhile. This is what that would look like instead of just trying desperately to fill these gaps with one kind of instruction over another. So I'm excited, very excited about it and the fact that it's getting some support and broad is very, very exciting to me for us to see what we want on this board.
Um, did you have questions?
I just, a couple of those, should be short. So I really just wanna call out the way you've done those PLTs with the links. I think that not only helps our current teachers, but I think it really will help new teachers, whether they're new to teaching or new to Thompson. They can just come in and click. And I'm thinking that may, you might be able to take that concept and build it out as you're doing all these new UDLs and everything where people can just really like, just quickly get the information help figure out what's best for the student. The other thing is on these charts, I know that we're trying to figure out new ways to get the data out there, show the data, cause there's so much data. So let's keep that in mind as I say this. Maybe for just like third grade and maybe fifth grade, reading? Maybe at the bottom, like underneath for the numbers students in the I ready? Is maybe just show, like how many students are on the read plan? Or how many are on IEP that's, that's specific to reading? Because those are two grades that are key. And then when they go to math and then, I'm sorry.
They're all specific to reading.
Okay, Tom, can I, can I please finish? So, because I think that will help determine, you know, when they go from fifth, third, how are they gonna be going in fifth, but then from fifth when they make that big leap into middle school. But I think it just helps add some context to like what's really going on. And then I wanna, Carrie, because we've heard a lot about eighth grade math and I've always like struggled, like how can kids go from elementary, they're doing so good and then they go to eighth grade math? And you explained it in a way that I thought would be beneficial for everyone to hear that I'd never heard before, that I never understood, that they're taking so many different math classes, but they're being tested on all of it. I don't know if you recall how you explained it to me.
So the, the big shift is once you hit around eighth grade, students get to pick depending on ability level, what math class they're starting to take. So you could have a bunch of eighth graders taking Algebra One, for example, and then in ninth grade they're taking geometry. Well, the PSAT nine is heavily focused on Algebra One content. And so when you ask those students to take that assessment, they have to recall that information back from eighth grade. Similarly, if they're a freshman taking geometry and then sophomore year they're going to Algebra Two, well, PSAT ten is heavily, heavily geometry skills. And so again, you're, you're back. So our, our students that are ahead of the game and, and advanced have to. So our our students that are ahead of the game and and advanced have to end up recalling information. Our students that are on the lower end of the spectrum, we have Algebra A and B. And so we've split Algebra One basically into two years. And so when they're freshmen and they're taking the PSAT nine, for example, they've only had half of the content. Even shown to them when they're taking the PSAT nine because they've done Algebra A. And then their sophomore year, they're gonna do Algebra B, which the PSAT ten, being heavily geometry, they haven't even seen that content yet. And so on the math side, really understanding how the tests are broken up and the content and standards they're they're um. Questioned on, it really changes once you hit high school level, which is unfortunate, it doesn't really test what students know. It's the recall of information, it really is the same for our science standards. They're only taking the CMAS science in fifth grade, eighth grade, and eleventh grade. But they're testing third, fourth, and fifth grade content science standards in fifth grade. They're testing sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science standards only in eighth grade. Ninth, tenth, eleventh grade science standards only in eleventh grade. And so it really is a lot about memory recall on some of these and so. Yes, assessments are important and it gives us many data points and it gives us one data point. And so you have to take an entire body of evidence to really understand where our students are. And the social side of it, right, we always have to remember, this is one day, one one blip in time. I could show up on that April sixteenth and have a migraine and have to take the SAT. I might not have gotten breakfast that morning. Mom and dad may have had a huge fight before I got to school today. I might have slept in a car and came to school and had to take the CMAS test. So we really do have to consider all of those pieces and yes, wonderful data points, which is why we look at so many different entities. But so many different pieces play into what the what these data look like for us.
Thank you.
All right, um unless there are no more question, no more questions about the information? I'm gonna adjourn our meeting, so.